I was looking for the clipboard.
I'd like to call this meeting of the Mayor and City Council, November 5th, to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance by me and remain standing. Mr. Trippit for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight. Father, we thank you for all your many blessings of life that you give us. Lord, we thank you for our community, Lord, and all the blessings that you've bestowed upon us. Father, we thank you for our country and we just thank you for the privilege of going to the polls tomorrow to cast votes. We pray, Lord, that you would all help us to exercise, Lord, that blessing, that privilege that you've given us. God, we pray your perfect will would be done. Father, we pray for those who in our community that are hurting, God, we ask you to be with them, give them strength, provide for their needs during this time. Father, we ask your hedge of protection on our community in the upcoming bad weather. We pray you would bring us safely through. And Father, we lift up the Mayor and the City Council tonight. Father, we ask you to grant them wisdom as they conduct and consider the business of this city. Father, we ask these things in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
This time it brings us down to citizens' comments. Is there anyone here that'd like to address the council? If so, would you please come to the front, state your name and address, and sign in? And we'll be glad to listen. Seeing no one raising or making a move, we'll move ahead. It's gonna be a long agenda tonight, folks, so we'll just keep moving. Item number five minutes. I assume you guys have had a chance to read over them. Any changes, additions, motion to accept?
Make a motion, accept the minutes.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Item six, Mayor and Council announcements.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much. I would like to, with great sadness, announce how sorrowful we were for the loss of Michelle Lewis, who was a great pillar to our community and a great citizen as well, who supported a lot of our endeavors here. And I would also like to thank everyone who came out to the Boo Bash this year over in West Carrollton on Halloween. It was great. We had lots of food, lots of candy, lots of games, and lots of people showed up. So thank you for that. I would also like to thank Kent Johnston, who I'm not sure if he's here or not tonight, but Kent, thank you for... And Joel, thank you for your work too in repairing the food pantries and the replanting of the food desert garden over in West Carrollton as well, which a lot of people really depend and count on, on this community. As you may have read, those things were destroyed by vandals earlier this month, or earlier last month. So thank you very much for that. To the city manager and his staff and everyone else, thank you for the bathrooms over on Robert Hendrix at that park. It's been a long time since we... Actually, we've never had bathrooms over there, so thank you for that. And this coming Saturday, I would like to invite everyone out to Miss Sparkle. It's on Saturday, November 10th, at the Mayberry Art Center. It is the annual Miss Sparkle Pageant hosted by Carrollton Parks and Recreation Department for special needs girls. The event starts at 6:00 PM and is one of the better programs put on by the department each year. So we encourage everyone to attend Miss Sparkle, and that's pretty much all for me.
Anybody else? I'd like to say it was an honor for me to represent us at the District Awards for the Carrollton Parks and Recreation Department, where they won all kind of awards. Gerald, I think one of yours was a winner.
Really?
It was... This year's district and state level for the Georgia Recreation and Parks Association, they won 14 awards for 2018. This is the most awards ever won in one year since the department started in 1956. They also won the highest honor in the state by winning the GRPA State Agency of the Year, which is the top Parks and Recreation Department for 2018. They have not won this award since 2012, and they are at the state conference this week in accepting their state awards.
Wow.
So a great shout out to Carrollton Parks and Rec for all the great work they're doing for us and representing us across the state. Anybody else?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You gentlemen had directed me to make arrangements to have a quarterly work session starting in January. I'd like to pass out what we propose for those dates, pass some of these down. If you gentlemen would think about it, and then we can have you address it formally in the December meeting. Also, toward the end of the year, you're gonna need to appoint some people to the Redevelopment Authority. I'll get you more information on that, but if you'd be thinking about the folks that you'd like to appoint to that board. Again, I echo what our Mayor said about the Recreation Department and all the awards that they won and their staff members won, and they just do a fantastic job. I want to thank the Main Street and Rec Department for the success of Oktoberfest Blues, Booze, and Brews, and that all-day event that was held on Saturday, October 27th. I want to remind you, gentlemen, of the Holiday Wishes Parade, which is Thursday, November 29th, at 5:30 PM. And you may recall that the route was changed to accommodate construction last year, and everybody loved the route so much that they're keeping the new route. So it starts, I believe, at the depot and goes to the library through the square. So, and then just to remind you that the Christmas party is the 6th of December at the Art Center at 5:30. Did I say that right? Is that when the party is? Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Everybody come out for the Holiday Wish Parade. Does that woman do lighting of the square also? Santa gonna be there? Item number eight, approval for agenda items for consideration. Do I have a chance to read down this long list?
I make a motion that we approve the agenda items as presented tonight.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Erica, I stuttered. You're gonna be here for a while.
Hopefully not too long. The first item on your agenda is a de-annexation request that you heard at your meeting in October. At the time, the request was tabled contingent on notifying the adjacent property owners of the request. If you recall, it's for a 26-acre tract on Valley Drive and Pine Ridge Drive. The request is to de-annex back into the county. We did indeed send those letters to adjacent property owners. To date, staff has not heard from any of those adjacent property owners. At this time, we would like for you to make a recommendation so that we can send it forward to the county, who will also be hearing that, this particular request, this evening.
They're gonna do it this evening?
They had to move their meeting because of the election to tonight. So they've got it at the end of their agenda, and we've got it at the beginning of ours, so...
When you say "they," you mean the E&amp;Z?
The county.
Oh, the county, okay.
The Planning Commission did not review this request. They're not required to review a de-annexation request because there's no zoning associated with it on our part.
And you said the property, the adjacent property owners had not shown any resistance or any concern at all?
Not that we've been... No one has made it aware to us. We put our contact information and notified them via mail in a letter of the de-annexation request, and we have not heard from anyone.
Because I know I've received some emails.
Yeah, I'm not sure about everybody else.
You have to. I know Rory and I did. I saw that.
We haven't been contacted.
And then tonight, Mayor, how is it working? Will you give anyone who wants to speak against or for the opportunity tonight, right?
I believe the petitioner's here as well. The petitioner is here as well.
Greg, where are you? I saw you earlier. You want to come and address this issue, or you just want to let it lie? Anybody want to speak in opposition? Yes, sir. Please come up, so we can hear you.
I'm John Dursher, D-U-R-S-C-H-E-R. I own some of the property adjacent here. I just, more of a concern in saying, no, it can't be done, but this map doesn't indicate that the wrong property line there is the water, the Little Talaposa River, which is the intake to the city water supply. And my only comment is that I think the city needs to consider if there's lead in some of the shot or whatever might be happening on that piece of property, that it'd be upstream of their intake. And they may want to consider having as much say-so as they can if that happens in the future.
Duly noted. Anyone else?
Yes, sir. My name is David Mitchell, and I also, I'm John's neighbor. We also have some property that's adjacent to this. I just had some concern about exactly what the... I know we've talked to Greg, my wife has, but exactly what the reason for the de-annexation is and what the future for that property might hold as far as if it's gonna be some sort of a commercial venture, or, you know, is that a possibility in the future? And so I was just kinda curious, and I don't know where to address that question too.
It's my understanding as a kid, when I walked it back in the '73, '74, shot quail on it, it's just a swamp.
And I think that's correct.
And it's not buildable. There might have been one or two... Greg, correct me if I'm wrong. There might have been one or two sites that might have been a buildable site in there, but it was still in the floodplain. It's pretty much all floodplain area. I haven't spoken to anybody from the Mack's property, is that right? Who's actually doing... I mean, Greg, you want to address that. I mean, you're welcome.
Mack's International, just my little boy's name's Mac. He named it LLC after him, and all of it. As you know, LLC can come out of a state, Utah, whatever, and that seems to be a lot of confusion.
So my only concern is, I know you guys shoot back there, and I have no issue with that, but I mean, as far as the number of people back there or the amount of shooting that's going on, you know, not gonna really change much.
More camped out, couple guys back there, that's it.
Okay. That's my concern. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I guess, yeah, it was Greg, it was Greg Camp that replied.
Can you just state your address, Greg? For the record, can you just state your address?
Yeah, 101 Amherst Lane, 30117.
Any more discussion on this?
I've got a couple questions or comments in addition to that. I've had about three residents of the adjacent properties reach out to me, voicing concerns of just shooting in the neighborhood, especially if, right now, we can... We hear that it will be used on occasion for hunting. But my problem, though, with it, and I think the concerns of residents in the area, where if we cannot regulate it, then at some point in the future, it could shift to something a bit more commercial. And I understand that there's not much place to build, anything, but from a... From the standpoint of regulating what occurs on the property, the city would no longer have any right to say, or give right to or deny right of a shooting range or anything like that. Is that correct?
That would be my understanding, that the county would regulate that.
So just with it being next to residential properties and then a good swath of land that is across the Little Talaposa that is currently for sale, the concerns from the residents on Valley Drive and around Lake Carroll, just having that inside of the bypass. I'm all for going hunting and everything like that, but just inside the bypass within the city, there are concerns from residents and just being able to figure out what is actually going on on the property. And if we, as a city, give up that right to regulate what occurs there, I just see there being conflict.
That is duly noted. Anybody else want to chime in? I have had no contacts from anybody personally concerning the issue of the de-annexation.
I've had three people in that area, and then two families and four individuals from the Lake Carroll War II area reach out to me about it, which is significant because it is just a small item on the agenda. So getting that many people actually reach out seemed significant.
Any more discussion? Do we have a motion either way?
I move that we approve the de-annexation request of 26.47 acres at Valley Drive, Pine Ridge Drive.
Have a motion? Do I have a second? Have a second. Any more discussion? All in favor of the de-annexation request of 26.47 acres at Valley Drive, Pine Ridge Drive, please raise your hand. All opposed. Thank you, gentlemen. Erica, you went away.
The second item on your agenda is Resolution 16-2018, and it's an amendment to Unified Development Ordinance for Food Trucks. In your September work session, we went over this in detail with you. And as you may recall, food trucks are not specifically addressed in our ordinance as it's written. Those are sort of a relatively new phenomenon, I guess, or at least a new popular phenomenon. The Planning Commission did review this request at their October meeting, and they recommended approval as we presented it. I will briefly go through what we presented. It is identical to what we discussed in the September work session with you. Basically, what it would do, it would allow food trucks by right in M1 and M2. They would have to get a zoning permit, however. And then it would allow the ability to put food truck courts in commercial zones excluding downtown. So C1 is excluded from this via a special use permit for that food truck court. The food truck court can stand on its own as a primary use of a piece of property, or it can be part of another use, i.e., it could be, like, for instance, take the Big Lot Shopping Center. If they wanted to ask for a food truck court in that shopping center parking lot, they could make application to the city. You guys will review it as part of the special use permit application process. There were some standards that we also included in the ordinance regarding food trucks. If you turn to page 16 of your packets, you'll see those. Basically, it addresses everything from hours of operation, the fact that they have to control noise, that their trash has to be hauled off by the vendors, that city will not pick up or provide trash receptacles for such uses. And the, no audio amplification would be allowed, and then no freestanding signage would also be allowed.
What was that audio what?
Audio, no noise, like audio amplification, music, that sort of stuff.
Okay.
So we were just trying to basically eliminate any type of potential nuisance.
So where are they trying to keep us over in the industrial area, M1, M2?
That's an area where there's a need for basically dining options. And so that's why they would be allowed by right just via a zoning permit. They would have to get a zoning permit.
At one time, we were discussing about having to have a brick-and-mortar building here in town. Is that off the table?
That is not in this ordinance as presented.
You mean a brick-and-mortar where these food trucks could actually dock every day and have like a food truck court? Is that what?
I think what the Mayor was asking is, in order for them to have an eligible food truck, they would have to have a primary location in town. Is that, Mr. Mayor, is that what you meant?
Yeah, where they were actually had a business license, and I think 302 has a food truck, and they have, it's a log cabinet, it's not brick-and-mortar.
And they would still be required to have a business license to do business in the city of Carrollton.
How is the... How are those food trucks inspected? By the regular health inspector like the other restaurants?
Right, correct. They can get, they have to get a food service permit, just like a restaurant would.
It's the same thing.
So I want to make sure I understand. So if I own a restaurant, let's say I own Bird's Burgers. I kinda like the way that sounds. But if I own Bird's Burgers, which is all vegetarian, by the way, plant-based beef... Listen, if I own Bird's Burgers, I can own a food truck, and I can have it downtown if I own a... Is that what we're saying?
No.
Okay.
Food trucks would not be permitted in the central business district. We're trying to eliminate that, basically, for instance, if somebody rents the AMP one night and just brings in food trucks every single Saturday, we're afraid that might stifle some of the good things that we have going on downtown, like the restaurant and entertainment.
They're not allowed anywhere downtown?
No, they would not be permitted downtown. We do allow them at the AMP if they are not selling food as part of a special event. So for instance, a snow cone truck, sometimes like a church, for instance, might rent the AMP, and they can give food away, but they can't sell it.
But if they want to go to, say, a park outside of the square, that's fine. Like, if they want to go over to the city park over on...
Currently, it's not written to where they could be on city property. They would have to apply to basically have a food truck court. Now, you guys could, I guess, designate a piece of property as a food truck court. Chuck, I guess we could be the applicants for something like that, correct? For special use?
Is that written in there currently? Because I know it says you can get a permit for commercial property, but is that permit... Does that permit currently extend, if we passed as written, to allow in those locations like...
I think we would want to review it location by location, and we would need to get a special use permit to allow a food truck court there. And that would be something we would have to do from our side, since we're the property owners of parks.
I think it... Oh, go ahead. I was gonna say, I think it would be neat if we look into possibly a food truck court in the future. I think that would be a lot of fun. And I get calls all the time about food trucks, and I know in the past, maybe 10 years up here, we've had people come and talk about it. So I'm glad to see us moving in the direction of formulating a policy to address food trucks. It's a great beginning.
There are quite a few local food trucks that are, have voiced their interest in setting up shop around town. Some, 302, Shuckers, Mexican Express, that are tied to a brick-and-mortar restaurant as well, but there are a few other in the area that also are locally owned but have trucks as well. They're really good food. I think they've been at some city events that we've had. And I've always been very, I think, more competition is great.
So can I ask, I need to ask a question.
Yes, sir.
Somebody, one of the banks puts on something, EMC puts on something, they bring the varsity down here on their food truck.
They're typically giving that food away. They're not in it for a business, if that makes sense. That's typically just a special event.
That's just a special event, so it wouldn't fall in this category.
Correct. They can continue to give that food away. Correct. That's where it transitions into a business at that point.
Any more questions?
I think I'd be more concerned about people giving away food if I owned a restaurant on the square than people selling it. That's just me talking.
I think there may be some people that want to make comments.
I see a hand in the back. Yes, ma'am. Please come up.
So what y'all are stating, if you were to bring the food truck in, if you're selling, you would have to have the permit. If not, you would bring it in, but you would be only giving it away. That's the only way it would be okayed. Is that what I'm hearing, for is the food truck?
There's certain areas of town where it would be permitted as right, as long as you had gone through your health inspection and everything like that, and that would be in the industrials.
Be business-wise, though.
And then for commercial areas, that would be a special use permit for those areas, which would be reviewed by city staff.
Just need to some understanding.
I have another question also. This was brought to me by some of these catering people. A lot of people being, health departments cracking down on...
Commercial kitchens.
Commercial kitchens for catering. Would this qualify for a commercial kitchen for catering crew?
They do issue food service permits for food trucks. Some of these food trucks are...
Elaborate.
$150,000-plus food trucks. I saw one the other day, it had a green egg in it, in the food truck.
So I was just, like, you know, they're cracking down on commercial kitchens for catering situations and...
Correct. I believe their requirements require them to have a commercial kitchen location if they're going to be issued a catering license, and some of our caterers did not have one, have those.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Anybody else? For, against, pro, con?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, make a motion that we adopt Resolution...
Resolution 16-2018, but with the following language. As to section 2.04.27 would read as, "Food trucks and food truck courts are permitted as a right in M1 and M2 zoning districts if such food trucks are owned and operated by restaurants located within the city limits of Carrollton." And also adding the following words to 2.04.27B, "Food truck courts owned and operated by restaurants located within the city limits of Carrollton are permissible in the C2, C3, O1, and R01 zoning districts only. Special use permit approved by the Mayor and City Council pursuant to section 2.04.24B of this UDO."
Mayor, could you, before we vote on that, could you maybe reiterate that once more?
Explain it, though.
Without reading it.
What the motion is, is that the food trucks have to be owned, operated by local restaurants within the city of Carrollton. It would prevent, if there is a restaurant from Atlanta bringing his food truck down here, setting up shop by right in a commercial zone, if he doesn't have a brick-and-mortar store in Carrollton, doesn't have employees in Carrollton, and then taking the proceeds that he makes down here in Carrollton and taking them back to Atlanta and spending them in Atlanta.
So in other words, there's no free enterprise? That's what you're saying?
You gotta have, it's free enterprise, it's just you have to have a restaurant in the city of Carrollton. I mean, the city of Carrollton, you have to have a restaurant here that can have a food truck. Is there anybody that has a food truck here?
So you're saying too, that the individuals can't go out to the industrial... If I own a food truck in Atlanta, I can't go out to the industrial park, or in Villa Rica or any other place?
No, you can go to Villa Rica, that's a different city. Talking about the city limits of Carrollton.
Who came up with this amendment, which we're just handing to... Oh, you came up with one?
I talked to some different restaurants.
Well, I'm against it, so no, I'm not voting in favor of it. I move that we do not add the addendum to it.
There's a motion.
Well, knock it down, like you do all the time.
Well, procedurally, I'll let the mayor.
Well, procedurally, I'm voting against it.
Okay, we can do that in a minute.
I believe in free enterprise, no matter where you live, you should be able to come here and make money.
Just, just a comment, I know that there's only a motion and no second. Um, from a, um, supply and demand sort of perspective, there are only, I think, three, um, food trucks that are tied to restaurants in town. And I do know that there have been multiple other, um, food truck businesses that are just outside the city limits, just, but do frequent our downtown, um, or frequent our, uh, events and are supporters of the city and, um, what we're doing here. And I think what this, uh, resolution to allow for food trucks within our city, um, it fills some gaps that are currently there. Right now, the reasoning behind having a by right, um, zone in industrial areas for food trucks is because there is, there's a gap there. And what we're trying to do is allow for businesses, if they make money, that they're gonna do it. If they, if not, they're not going to go over there. But what we're, what we're hoping to see is some more dining options being available for those areas. And I think, um, I, ideally, well, what I would really love to see is, hey, if the market's good enough, you're going to see people invest in brick and mortar in those areas, because the market's gonna prove that there is a demand there. Um, so from a, let the market work within our community, I think it makes sense to, uh, see that happen. And a little bit of competition for our, uh, local restaurants isn't a bad thing. I think what you're going to see is better, more, better and more dining options for, uh, residents in selected areas. It's not just gonna be food truck central throughout town. Um, what you're going to see though is some light competition. I think a lot of our established restaurants in town, they're going to be frequented, they're going to continue to be there. And there isn't direct, um, competition, because they're outside of our central, uh, business district in our downtown.
Rory, so, and, well, I, I guess this should be directed at me. So what happens then, and, and Chuck, you can tell me, or whomever can tell me if I'm correct on this. Um, and I'm gonna put my sister on the spot for a second. I know she works in the industrial park, and I hear her talk about food trucks sometimes that come to, I guess when y'all have a break or something like that, Chevett, I'm not sure. Oh, they don't come anymore? Not, okay, well, I know, I'm, I'm sure some still want to come. So no longer would those trucks be allowed to, uh, according to this amendment and this addendum that we may be adding on tonight, no longer would those trucks be allowed to come to serve those people, uh, who work in the industrial park, like at, uh, Pilgrim's Pride, for instance, I know they have food trucks that come there as well to offer, uh, alternatives to, to their employees who can't leave. They get a very short break, and some don't have transportation. And they can't leave Pilgrim's Pride to go run to Wendy's or McDonald's or to a grocery store. So it's either bring your food or, uh, eat off of a food truck. And if they eat off that food truck, those people are paying taxes, and that's contributing to the economy. Maybe we can find a way to tie in our local taxes somehow, to look at their revenue and charge them Carroll County tax, taxes for being here. So it's not just, and I don't know how food trucks work, that's not my forte, so maybe some of you have expertise in the area. If I go to Carrollton and sell off my food truck, do I pay Carrollton taxes since I'm within the city limits? Can we control that?
They have to have a business license, so they'll be paying business, they'll be paying tax on that and sales tax for anything that is sold. So it, it, all it does is just create more jobs in that area. It, what it does is allow for more options for people. And I really don't think that we're gonna have a big rush of food trucks all of a sudden. I think if we see there's an issue, what we can do is say, if we're only seeing, uh, Atlanta food trucks, which I really don't see them rushing out here, because we, we've got a huge amount of need. I think what we're gonna see is some local ones utilizing this new option. And that's what, they voiced that, um, that desire to be able to sell here.
Right, and I'm not against the local establishments downtown, because, uh, the restaurants downtown are truly my grocery store. I'm a bachelor and I don't cook anymore, so I go eat there every night or order from the corner of Brown Dog or Sam's. So I'm in favor of, uh, those businesses downtown, but I'm also in favor of free enterprise and people coming here to, uh, bring their, their food trucks.
I'm, I'm also in favor of free enterprise, but you can't compare a food truck that comes here, they're not breaking law or mortar. They don't have to have the food stuff that they have to refrigerate. They don't have to pay electrical bills. They don't have to pay property.
Well, they're, I'm talking to my council members.
No, you're talking to.
You, you don't have to, you, you don't have to pay property taxes when you own a food truck. You don't have to pay to store your food stuff when you have a food truck. You don't have to pay labor costs when you have a food truck. You don't have to pay payroll tax when you have a food truck. You don't have to have somebody at your restaurant from nine to eight, or nine to 10 every day. So that's why, when you're talking about free enterprise, and I'm for free enterprise, and I'm for food trucks, I just don't, this just seems the way that without us helping our local businesses, that you're giving unfair advantage to out-of-city food trucks to come in and take business.
I think, I think Rory, I'm, I'm sorry, right, Rory, did you say there's three, currently three businesses that have food trucks? I hear you say that.
Um, I, ones that I know of that are also tied to restaurants are 302, Shuckers, and Mexican Express. I do know of a few others that do operate, um, in, in and around that are just outside the city that aren't maybe tied, that, that aren't tied to a restaurant, but, um, are local, locally owned businesses.
You know of more than, than those three?
There's one more, uh, Tanner actually just got a food truck, so that would be the fourth inside the city limits.
You know, I'm curious to see if there's anybody here who owns a food truck or a local restaurant here to debate this topic tonight or speak. I know it's not, maybe not my place to call, but I can't wait till we get to that part of the agenda to see if anybody's here.
I've got a question. Where did this, uh, UDO change, uh, come from? Did it, I don't think it came from just our discussion.
It, it actually came from staff, but the reason it came from staff is because we are continuing to get inquiries about it. Uh, I know it's actually, we're actually getting inquiries about it through our business licensing office. And since our ordinance didn't address it, we just needed to, we need, we need to know what direction to go.
Do you guys know, from just coming in the door, where these businesses were located that were coming for, uh, forward with this?
Um, we've obviously had the discussion about the ones that you, you've mentioned, the, the locally owned ones. Um, there's, there's some more that we had, one on Maple Street that popped up. That was a, uh, a trailer, Blue Nomad, I believe that is the name. And I, I want to say that gentleman's based out of Villa Rica. Haley, I'm looking at you, is it Villa Rica that Blue Nomad?
Or Bremen?
First Christian Church? Okay, um, and then we've, uh, we do have some that, that are not within the city limits, that don't have brick and mortar, but they actually use local ingredients. I think, uh, I want to say Renegade Chef uses local meat, um, but they don't have necessarily a, uh, a brick and mortar in, in the city of Carrollton, but they are using local products a lot of times. I mean, a lot of them have very special kind of niches they're trying to hit. Um, and so we have some that come to Mayfest, for instance, that are not local, but that use local ingredients and that sort of thing.
So I, I just want to, everybody understand, I'm, I'm, I was in favor of this, I'm just not in favor of the addendum, of the amendment or whatever the word is.
Mayor, can we, would you entertain a friendly motion on your amendment?
The motion has to be a second.
Yeah, I mean, but, would, would you be, not, on your amendment?
I haven't made an amendment, I made a motion.
Yeah. Motion's been made, but would you?
I think it has to be seconded first and then amendment made.
That's right.
Not trying to be difficult, Mr. Mayor.
Or just fail without a second.
Or it fails without a second.
So we had a first, is there a second on the amendment to resolution sixteen dash two oh one eight? Well, if we don't get a second, then we're just, just dies from lack of, you know? So the amended, amendment to the resolution dies on lack of a second. Would you be opposed?
Let me just clarify, the, the, the motion was to approve resolution sixteen two thousand eighteen with those changes. And as I understand it, that motion has now died for lack of a second, so another motion would be in order.
I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution sixteen dash twenty eighteen.
Have a motion.
I second that.
And we have a second.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we make a motion by amending that resolution by saying, um, that a license fee should be a minimum of five hundred dollars. I don't think there's established a license.
Chuck, don't we need to go ahead and move on with this, what, yeah? Because we have the motion and the second, so let's go to council before we do that.
Well, there's now a motion to amend the motion that's on the table. So the question is, will the motion to amend the motion get a second? And then y'all will have to vote on whether to in fact amend the motion.
Cause my understanding, the license fee fairly low, is that correct?
It would be based off of what a regular restaurant would be charged. So there's a processing fee, and then is it, I guess, ninety-five cents per, you know?
It's not fair, nor is it feasible. They don't have the income that a regular restaurant that a brick and mortar has. They don't even have the time to sit here and invest in our community the way, uh, or be vested in our community the way a, a regular restaurant would. They don't have the income, so they should not be held to the same standard.
One thing to, to remember.
I'm looking at you, but I'm not talking.
One, one thing to remember is any of these special use permits you're gonna see again. Um, and so.
I understand that.
Right, there'll be very specific requests, and it may be that some of these, these special stipulations could be applied at that point, Chuck, as part of the special use permit. Outside of the industrial zone.
It would depend on what the stipulation is, but yeah, that would be the time to impose conditions on the special use permit.
So by right, obviously, in M1 and M2, but the other, the other zones, just, just, I mean, you'll, you'll get a second glance at it.
No, I understand that, but by right, you're just gonna pay a small license fee.
Yes, and they'll have to get a zoning permit as well.
Right.
Okay, so we have a motion, and we had a second, and then we had an amendment to the motion.
We have a motion to amend the motion, and at, at least at this point, I don't think it's been seconded.
We have a second on it. Well, I'll second it. The minute of the motion. But I would like now, now can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Mayor, would you be inclined to amend your motion to allow outside food trucks to be in M1, M2? And to be part of yours, apply only to brick and mortar businesses here in town?
Um, I just, I think I've already stated my position, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate you reaching out to me, and I appreciate you seconding my motion. I just ask that we open up the amendment to the main motion to debate and move forward on that vote, and then we can move forward with the main motion. But thank you.
All right, um, gonna vote on the amendment first, right?
And I want to make sure that, um, that I understand the amendment, and I'm, what I'm writing down is the amended motion would be to change two point oh four two seven A and add the following sentence at the end. A licensing fee of five hundred dollars will be required for each food truck. Is that what you're?
On all food trucks, that would be in A and B.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, what I heard said was a minimum, and the only reason I say that is as the years go by, and it may be 20 years from now, that may not be a large number, and you may want to be able to, we don't, we don't normally set fees in this section of ordinance, so I believe I heard you say minimum.
All right, just so everybody's clear, so my understanding is that there is a motion to amend Rory's motion, so that resolution sixteen two thousand eighteen would be approved with a licensing fee of a minimum of five hundred dollars will be required for all food trucks. And that language would appear in both two point oh four two seven A and two point oh four two seven B. And again, this is just the motion to amend the underlying motion.
I'm, I'm gonna, Rory, I'm gonna vote against that. I don't want local businesses, so I'm gonna ask a friendly everybody unanimously, vote against that.
Let me say this, in my 20 years being here, I've never seen anything like this. This has turned into a convoluted atrocity, let me just say that. I've never seen anything like this. It's complex, more complicated than it should be. We should be voting on the original amendment. You've had time to call in on these things. We've all got a draft agenda, where these changes could have been made in the preliminary process. So if I may make a motion for the original, um, agenda item. I move we pass it as presented by staff.
We do, we need a vote.
We gotta vote.
Motion to amend.
All these amendments.
Please vote on the amendment.
On the motion to amend.
On the motion to amend. We have a first and a second on the motion.
That's correct.
All in favor, so just call for the motion, I'm getting confused now.
Okay, that's fine. All you're voting on right now is whether to amend Rory's motion. That's all you're voting on right now. It's not to approve the resolution or anything, just all you're voting on right now is whether to amend Rory's motion.
Okay, all in favor of amending Rory's original motion, please raise your hand.
Amending Rory's original motion of what?
We're just voting on the amendment.
Convoluted, it's.
Just hang on, Gerald, just hang on.
Come on.
Just hang on.
It's ridiculous. Um, it is.
It dies from.
It's their time and money that we're talking about here.
Everybody against, please raise your hand. Okay, we're back to the original motion and second.
I don't know if we're voting on.
Right now, we're back to my original.
Right now, we're back to your original motion.
With no amendment?
With no amendment.
Out of fairness, let's state that amendment in layman's terms for everybody. It's not an amendment.
It's not an amendment, Gerald, it's a motion.
That, that motion failed. So what is before the council now is Rory's original motion to approve resolution sixteen two thousand eighteen as it was presented to the mayor and council in the pack.
And I second that.
You had a second on it, correct?
Point of inquiry, Chuck, can a, would it be discriminatory if we had a licensee fee that only was applied to, to food trucks that were outside the city limits? Meaning they were not owned by a restaurant, by a local restaurant? So if you're from Atlanta and you come in, and we say, well, you're from outside of, you're outside the city limits, we're gonna make you pay a five hundred dollar licensee fee. But if you are a food truck with a, that's tied to a local business, you don't have to pay, you'll pay the normal license fee.
I would tell you that, I, I mean, I don't, now, now I'm not trying to duck the question. And I don't know necessarily what a court would do with that. Um, I mean, that would be the argument that someone would make, is that, you know, you're discriminating against out-of-town service providers. Um, if called upon to defend it, I would say the reason you would impose a fee for out-of-town service providers is for the reasons that y'all have talked about, is they're not paying presumably property taxes and other things in the city and incurring these costs and expenses for having bricks and, and mortar here. But a, again, I'm just telling you how I would defend it, not predicting what somebody would do with it.
Have a motion and a second.
Well, I'm gonna make a, an, a motion to amend that, um, any food truck that is not tied to a local restaurant, that being within the city limits, has to pay a minimum of a five hundred dollar licensing fee.
Didn't you just say that?
To have a second. It's like it, no second dies on the line, sorry. So back to our original deal, resolution sixteen dash two thousand eighteen. First by Rory, seconded by Gerald. Any more discussion? All in favor of approving resolution sixteen dash two eighteen as written, please raise. All in favor of approving Resolution sixteen dash two eighteen as written, please raise your hand. All opposed. Motion carries. Ms. Studdard, Resolution seventeen dash two eighteen Unified Development Ordinance Amendment, paving permits.
Yes, the Planning Commission reviewed Resolution, the Resolution regarding requiring paving permits for certain paving activities within the city at their October Planning Commission meeting. They recommended unanimous approval of this particular resolution. If you recall, we discussed, we, I'm sorry, we discussed this during your September work session. This would require a paving permit that is currently not required. The intent is not to make money off of this, the intent is to, to give staff the opportunity to review the activity prior to it occurring, to make sure that it meets our current ordinance. We have had a few issues where the work is completed and it does, either landscaping, required landscaping is removed. Or basically the, they pave more than they, they really are allowed to based off of the zoning district. And it's very difficult to go back to property owners and ask them to pull up once they've done it. And so this would give us an opportunity to get to review it and to work with them ahead of time. The ordinance as it's written is exactly as, as it was presented at your September work session. Basically, all paving permit, I mean, all paving activities within the city outside of residential zones, single family residential zones would require paving permit. There is a thirty dollar application fee to cover administrative costs. Any non-conforming lot can be resurfaced and repaved, they do have to get a permit for it. They just wouldn't be able to expand that non-conformity, but they would still be able to maintain and repair the lot that they, that they have, even if it doesn't meet the current ordinance. I'm available if you have any questions.
I've got a question, any violations to it, what would be the penalty?
The, if, if there's a violation and not, they, then they would basically have the typical, the codes enforcement could cite them and it would be up to a thousand dollars per day of violation, just like our other ordinance violations.
Thank you. Can we also, if it does pass, communicate this to any paving companies so they can communicate that with? Because I know any changes, business owners may not know it and things like that, so just making sure that they can communicate that as they're getting contracted to do work. I know we won't be able to probably get everybody, but at least try to get as many as possible.
Yes, I mean, there's typically not, there's just a handful that do work primarily in the city, we'll, we'll definitely notify them.
Does anyone in here want to speak for or against this? Seeing no one to have a motion, we accept.
Make a motion, we approve Resolution seventeen dash two thousand eighteen.
Second?
Motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor of approving Resolution seventeen dash two eighteen Unified Development Paving Permits, please raise your hand. Motion carries. Resolution eighteen dash two eighteen Signs.
We're gonna get there. All right, the next resolution on your agenda is an amendment to Unified Development Ordinance regarding the regulation of special event and seasonal sales, temporary signs, permit fees, and permit fees for temporary signs. The Planning Commission reviewed this resolution at their October meeting, they recommended unanimous approval of the resolution as it's presented. If you recall, we discussed this at your September work session as well. We are looking to try to clean up some of our temporary sign ordinance language. It was very ambiguous, it didn't place a limit on the number of signs and the number of days that they would get the signs and that sort of thing. And, and we've had numerous complaints, actually numerous complaints from, from this elected body as well regarding some of the temporary signs in, in the city. The resolution as written basically does not allow, I'm just gonna go through it real briefly, if you turn to page twenty-two of your packets, doesn't, it will no longer allow banners and pennants and streamers or multicolored triangular shaped, basically anything that looks like a pennant. Any kind of balloons or gas filled fixtures, in addition to that, searchlights, beacons, and other advertising novelties. We did set a limit on the number of days and the number of permits that you can have for these temporary signs. As discussed at your September work session, we revised the ordinance to read as you suggested, which was basically you can get these permits four times a year, you know, four times in a twelve month period, I'm sorry. You can have these signs for fifteen consecutive days during the permit period. The permits, the special event signs themselves, the temporary signs cannot exceed fifty square feet and you can't have more than two per property unless you have a property that has double road frontage and then we will give you two per road frontage. We, there is an impound fee associated with temporary signs in the, in the ordinance as revised. There's a thirty dollar impound fee if a sign is placed in the public right of way and city staff has to remove it, will keep it for thirty days. And if you would like to retrieve your sign, you can get it back for thirty dollars. There's also a permit fee of thirty dollars per special event sign. It was one dollar per day for the sign and that's difficult for staff to administer, so this just puts a flat fee of thirty dollars on it. I'm available if you have any questions.
Can you clarify to me what a special event sign would be?
Ground signs, you can have banners, but you can't have the, the small banners on the strings, like the pennants and that sort of thing. But you can have banners, typically when people are having sales, you'll see, they'll put up special event signs for that. A lot of people use like kind of the real estate type ground signs. Now, real estate signs themselves are excluded from this, but real estate type ground signs, when a lot of times there's sales or special events or grand openings. Any, anything of a temporary nature, that's not, you know, made with permanent materials and professionally installed.
Does this apply to residences as well, like homes? Like if I want to put a sign in my yard that says Birds Burgers at my house, like?
Well, we would make sure you have a home occupation permit first, but no, I'm just kidding. We, we wouldn't allow that in residential, we wouldn't allow commercial signage in a residential area.
We wouldn't enact this if I stuck a Birds Burgers sign in my front yard.
Well, what we would first do is check to see if you had a business license.
A one that says have a nice day and be nice to each other. Your yard sale.
Like a yard sale sign, you know, Chuck, that's a good question. I don't, as it's written, I, I would not assume that we would have yard sale signs in this. But I guess potentially we, I don't, I mean, that's a question for Chuck, I'm not sure if I answered that.
I guess that would be something that, you know, I frankly hadn't considered yard sale signs. I mean, it would seem to me the definition of a temporary sign.
In a special event.
In a special event, so I know that there are exceptions in the ordinance, you know, we, we deal with real estate signs and all separately, but I don't know why we would make, carve out an exception for yard sale signs.
I believe these changes are all in the non-residential signage section, I can look real quick, but I've got to pull out my full ordinance just to make sure.
While you're looking, could y'all tell me, after I read this all week and read it and read it and copied it and brought it in. I went by three of our car dealerships and everybody had something up. County, inside the city, balloons, or I don't think they're balloons, they appear to be a permanent, it's not a balloon anymore. I see Mr. Mike Bell in the back, maybe he can help me out on that a little bit. What, what do y'all use instead of balloons, they're not inflatables? Yes, sir, please, because I'm, I'm trying to get clarification of what we're looking at here, I mean, I mean, I saw that you had something totally different than what I saw last year out there.
And I promised my wife I'd behave, so. Yeah, they're, they're permanent fixtures, but they're not helium, they're not latex. There's a company that we hire to come out each month and make sure they're all even and, you know, they're attached as they should be and. But it just helps us to draw people in off the street, it's just a marketing thing. We employ forty-five to fifty people, we pay their health insurance, they have a 401K, they have paid vacation. And we depend on people, I mean, I don't see any of my customers in here, but we depend on local people to come in and buy cars. And, you know, you got to have every edge you can get. And I, you know, I mean.
So if it's not inflatable, is that going to be covered in what we're, we're talking about here, Erica?
We just, we just try to do everything we can to sell a car and, you know, you get your hands tied behind your back, it makes it even harder.
I understand, I was just trying to get a clarification, if it's not inflatable, is that going to be a?
Well, I heard the word permanent as well, I didn't know what that was.
The way it's written, it just says balloons, it doesn't say whether or not, it does say or gas filled, but it does include balloons. And I guess, I'm assuming these are kind of like lollipops, but they're plastic. So they would be, as this ordinance is written, they would be included.
Let me ask everybody this, like, why are we talking about this tonight? Is there a plethora of problems around signs in this community? I don't, I don't see one.
Well, Mr. Bird, I think we have more pressing issues than balloons.
Worrying about balloons?
I think we got a, you know.
I'm voting against this.
Drugs and.
Thank you.
I don't even allow my yard man to put my grass items out on the sidewalk, I make him carry them off. I know this, I live in the city limits, I know the city picks them up, but I want him allowed, he said, why can't I put them on the sidewalk? I said, because it's trashy. And I'm, I'm gonna get a billboard, I told my wife, we're paying, y'all are paying taxpayers, we're paying somebody to go up and down the bypass and pick up litter and cut the grass. But we're not, and go down, go down the bypass in the morning and look at all the garbage already out, and we just had it picked up. I mean, I want to keep Carroll beautiful, I thought I was gonna put a big billboard up on the bypass, don't be trashy, be classy, keep Carroll beautiful.
Ooh, I like that.
You know, and.
Like I said, I appreciate you coming in, I just wanted to clarify what y'all had at, I didn't know what.
It's not, I mean, I do have.
Well, I'm voting against this one too.
They're not the little pennants, they're not plastic, they tear off and blow everywhere, but I do have some used car flags stuck in the ground, but we just put them up two or three times a year. But now the, the globes are kind of permanent, so.
What's a globe, the balloon thing, the?
Well, they're not balloons, like, because they'd have to have.
Oh, I know what you're talking.
Be elastic, I mean, be.
They're on a black stick, they're about this big, yeah, they're sixty-nine dollars apiece, I know that.
I don't know.
They are.
I've got a couple.
Again, I don't know where this is coming from, this is ridiculous, and it's micromanaging.
I got a couple of comments about it. Back when I first started campaigning, beautification of our commercial corridors was a big piece of what I heard from people in our community, what they wanted to see happen. We formed a corridor committee to look to try to develop and beautify, and one of the things that did come up were just clutter. Clutter of signs just along the street, which ends up just, and either becoming trash that gets run onto the road because they're not picked up, or just visual clutter in, in general. And that clutter diminishes our work towards beautifying our commercial corridors. So one thing that I have heard from a lot of people, because this visual clutter along our corridors, it, it really is something that we, a lot of other communities have addressed in terms of disallowing it. And what it can do is help move towards beautifying those areas of town where we have committed to looking at beautifying.
So what you're saying, Rory, is this basically came out of the corridor beautification committee?
I, I know it's come from multiple communications with business owners, from residents, just saying, hey, why, why is this allowed to have just temporary trash going up and down the road? Because you'll see a lot of five K signs just sitting out there or we're going out of business each and every month and they just sell enough stuff that they can stay in business and put up another sign. I think what I'd like to see is some of that temporary signage removed.
Well, I'm ready to vote on it.
Mr. Mayor, as well, I've, I've got a lot of complaints up and down for residents live over on, on the west side of Carrollton regarding Maple Street, same thing. And I imagine you have, but I don't know, but maybe, I'm, I'd like to make a motion, we table this. And let us go back and, and let our city staff see if we can reach some compromise, maybe it's too broad. So I'm gonna make a motion that we table this, Resolution eighteen two thousand eighteen.
And let me say too, there's no way to, that I will be sated from anything they come up with, I'm always gonna vote against it.
I'll second that motion. Yes, ma'am.
I'm all about keeping America beautiful too. And I have given up my home to my kids and I moved on Stewart Street. And my OCD, and I thank God for my OCD, I don't need nobody to tell me to clean up my street. I don't need you to pay me for it, I just can't stand clutter. But before I go through what I am hearing you all say, I get out there and I get my trash bag and I have two of them and I get a hand and I go and clean that street up, it's just that simple to me. If it's gonna be like what you all are addressing, well, pay some of these young kids, put some money in their pocket and have them to go out there and do it. That is what I am hearing now.
Ms. Benson, they're, they're really not talking about trash being picked up, they're talking about people putting out little signs.
I understand those signs, they still are there, we, we vote every, we, we always have voted, I know exactly the sticks imposed. But I still say if it's gonna cause this kind of ruckus, keep America beautiful, give some of these kids a job, put some money in their pocket and have them to clean up for you. I'm hearing everything y'all are saying, that's just my opinion on where we at with the sign and the cleaning up thing. Business wise or whoever, if you got such a good business and your finances is that good and these signs are taking you to the level that is, taking you off what y'all are talking about now, hire you some young person to clean it up, and that's just my opinion on it, because I hear each and every one of y'all, it's my opinion.
It's always like this, Ms. Benson.
So you have a motion and a second to table this to a later date. Going to vote on the motion to table. All in favor of tabling this, please raise your hand. All opposed? Motion carries, we're gonna table this to sometime later, when staff's got a little more time to reach out. Resolution nineteen dash two eighteen, that's a whole lot to read, Eric, I'm just gonna let you have it.
Yes, Louis, can you put it up on the board? This particular resolution is a, what we call an omnibus resolution, this, this is mostly housekeeping items. I can go through these things individually, but I, what I would like to do is just go through the ones that are kind of significant changes. This omnibus resolution, here we go, is to amend Section two dot zero one dot zero two Residential Zoning Districts. To amend Table two dot zero three dot zero three Table of Land Uses. To amend Section dot, two dot zero four dot zero six Personal Care Homes. To amend Table two dot zero four dot zero six C Standards for Personal Care Homes and Family Personal Care Homes. To amend Section two dot zero four dot one nine Daycare Facilities. To amend Table dot four dot zero one dot zero one Standards for Lot Area Width Density and Lot Coverage. To amend Section four dot zero two dot zero one Design Standards for Single Family Townhouses. To amend Section four dot zero two dot zero three Design Standards for Multi-Family Developments. To amend Section four dot zero two dot zero four Design Standards for Industrial Development. To amend Table four dot zero seven dot zero four C Tree Canopy Requirements by Zoning District. To amend Section five dot zero two dot zero two Standards for Accessory Structures. To amend Section five dot zero two dot zero three Fences. To amend Section six dot one two dot zero zero Sidewalks. And to amend Section ten dot zero three Appeals for the Decision, From a Decision of the Board of Development Appeals to the Unified Development Ordinance. This particular omnibus resolution was reviewed by the Planning Commission in October last month and it was recommended for approval with the following conditions, four to one. The conditions include, number one, to include R eight zoning district in all tables in the U D O as appropriate. And number two, to exclude the proposed change to Section four dot zero two dot zero one B six Regarding Permitting Vinyl. The resolution that was in your packets shows these changes noted. So the resolution that was in your packets is the resolution that the Planning Commission recommended. Very quickly, some notable things in this omnibus resolution, I can go through them individually if you would like, but I'm just gonna hit the highlights otherwise. We did create a new single family zoning district, R eight, that's eight thousand square foot minimum lot size. In that district, only single family homes would be permitted and parks and open space. This particular zoning district is really born out of the, another provision that's included in this resolution, which is the reduction of minimum house size from twelve hundred and fifty square feet to nine hundred square feet. Many of the changes in this omnibus resolution reflect that R, that new R eight zoning district. Please note that nowhere on the zoning map is there R eight or is there proposed to be R eight. So an applicant, if they are seeking that particular district, would have to come before this board again to get approval for that. We also included professional office as a permitted use in the industrial zone. Currently, it is not permitted at all and this would permit it by right. We cleaned up some things when it came to personal care homes and. Uh, we cleaned up some things when it came to personal care homes and, uh, family personal care homes and group personal care homes. Uh, that will make it easier for staff to administer some of the provisions, uh, including, including administratively, administratively waiving the fence requirement when it's not necessary. Uh, we also increased the maximum lot coverage, um, in several of our, uh, industrial and commercial districts, uh, on page thirty-one of your packets. As I mentioned a few minutes ago, uh, we are proposing that the minimum house size go from twelve fifty to nine hundred. We better defined, uh, portions of the buildings and industrial developments that are open to the public. Uh, they are subject to specific design standards where the industrial piece of the building is not, and we had to, uh, better clarify that.
Can you go back to minimum house size again?
Yes, sir.
From four fifty to nine, you said to nine hundred square feet being the minimum, so the smallest house in Carrollton now has to be nine hundred square feet?
If this is adopted as proposed.
It used to be twelve fifty, not four fifty.
As a minimum?
It used to be, or currently it is twelve fifty, is what I meant to say.
It's currently twelve fifty and we're reducing it to nine hundred.
All of this is a lot. This is a lot for people to ingest. I think this is a lot for voters to ingest. The ballot tomorrow is not as complicated as what we've seen here tonight. Um, and I, I don't care whose toes I step on or who I insult, but we need to find a way to streamline these agendas. They are too complex and they get too convoluted up here. This is a lot. This is a lot for anybody to sit out there and try to understand. We're losing our customers. People are making faces and walking out of the room. This is, this is absurd. I've never seen anything like it in my life. This is a lot. This could have been divided. I could have said it a couple of weeks ago, but it could have been divided up, divvy it up. Give us a little bit of this at a time. Whoever I'm talking to, this is too much and it's too long. These meetings are inefficient and they're too long. We shouldn't require people to sit in here this long. They have a life and they have things, they have businesses to tend to. We're sitting here two and three hours debating and discussing ridiculousness. And I'm not the only person in this room who feels this way and those people watching at home feel the same way too, cause they're sending me messages right now. This is ridiculous. That's a lot to put before a body and that's a lot to put before a small town too. This is too much. And I wish some of our constituents would come here and say that they've had enough. This is, this is ridiculous. What are we doing? Are we drafting the whole city? We drafting everything we built in the past twenty years and everything that we stand for? Or however many years we've been here, there's greater things to work on, as Ms. Benson said, and some of the things that we worked on here tonight, sitting here nitpicking over city policy. I'm looking at you, Erica, but I'm not talking to you.
No, that's fine, that's fine.
It's ridiculous. Who's behind all this? I wonder.
Many of these are, are staff recommendations because we administer the ordinance daily and the, these will help our, our staff better administer the ordinance. Uh, one thing I know that the public basically, you know, deserves is a, a clear and concise, uh, administration of the ordinance. We wanna be able to treat everyone fairly, but we also need good direction in some places that might be ambiguous. So some of these are, are born from staff recommendations. Some are because we've had issues come up. And so, uh, I guess it's a little bit of both. Um, it is very complicated and, and there's a lot of information here.
We got fences, we got sidewalks, we got, I mean, I, I read.
It's a lot.
Four feet, sidewalk's gotta be four feet off the back of the curb.
There, there's a beauty strip required.
Who's gonna remember all this stuff? I can't, if my constituents ask me about this tomorrow, I'm gonna say, I have no idea what you got. I can't keep up with all that.
We do review these things.
I'm just keeping it real.
Well, I mean, when, when the GOSA plans review, we have it, we, we know it, I guess I should say. So we do review these things.
How are you gonna protect, I mean, how are you gonna maintain a four feet off the back of the curb for the sidewalk to, and then another five feet?
That, that's not new, actually. That's, that's existing in the ordinance.
Is that existing in the ordinance now?
It is in the, the existing ordinance.
Then it hadn't been followed for how long?
Uh, it, we try to follow it and I will tell you, there are times when either there's constraints with right of way or something like that, where we're having to come in and retrofit sidewalks, but for new construction, especially with streets, uh, we, we do, we do ask that the beauty strip be put in. And that's been in, that's been in the ordinance.
I've got a question in regards to the tree canopy cover requirement that's moved from ten thousand to twelve fifty. What was the, uh, reason behind that?
Uh, it did not reflect what was in the, uh, table.
Okay.
We just, basically, they didn't match, so.
And again, my apologies for the length of the agenda. We were trying to make sure we didn't have, oh, too long an agenda in December. These are all things we went through in that work session and they were all, it is, the ordinance contradicts itself. At some point, we've gotta clean it up. So I realize it's a lot of information, but at some point, it's gotta be cleaned up. We did attempt to go through the detail of this in the, in the work session that we had on this again. Uh, and even when I, and I sent the thing out and apologized for the length at the time and, you know, tried to send it out early. Uh, it is a lot of information, but it is basically the law that we have to follow and it contrad, the document contradicts itself. So this was to clean that document up. So it was not to try to put too much information before you. Again, we had a, a fairly long work session to try to, to go through the detail itself.
So, so then this could, this whole thing tonight, if there's little nitpicky little things that I don't like about it, I can sit here and we're gonna go back and forth for three or four more hours about, that's a lot, I mean, what are we gonna vote one time for all this? Is it one vote? Or is it multiple votes for each?
In our work session, what we did, we, we discussed with staff about this. After staff recommended, we make these changes to make their job easier to enforce because there were some discrepancies in the document and the U D O that they need to enforce.
So is it one vote or multiple votes?
Right, this would be one resolution. So it would be one vote.
Well, I'd like to motion, uh, make a motion right now that we table this and then break it up into separate agenda items and disperse those agenda items through, I guess, the next three, four months.
Let me, if I can.
In, in an order of urgency.
There, there is one, the very last amendment to section ten dash point oh three, point oh five, which is the appeals from the decisions of Board of Development Appeals. That's a change we need to go ahead and make because the certiorari process is what is now required under Georgia law. That is the process you're to follow, um, in order to appeal from the Board of Development Appeals. So if, if the wishes of the mayor council are to table the rest of it, I would just ask that we go ahead and at least consider that one change to section ten point oh three, point oh five.
With the addendum, or with the amendment of, uh, I guess, voting on, uh, item ten dash oh three, dash oh five, which I put in the form of a motion right now.
I'm confused, sorry.
I, I think the, I think Councilman Bird's motion is to approve staff's recommended changes to section ten point oh three, point oh five. But otherwise, table consideration of the rest of this resolution is.
Yeah, that's what I'm gonna second.
With consideration to our constituents and the time that they have to spend here at City Hall, hearing us go back and forth and argue all night long.
So I have a motion and a second. To, um, table resolution nineteen two dash one eight, two zero one eight, but to approve. The proposed changes to section ten. Ten oh three oh five, appeals for the direction. Okay. Everybody understand that. All in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed? Motion carries. Resolution twenty dash two zero one eight.
Mr. Mayor, before we move on, I just wanna make sure what the motion we, that was approved was that the, then these ordinance changes would be spread over the next three meetings. That would be November, I'm sorry, December, January, and February.
Okay.
Um, in the sense of urgency. I believe that was the motion that was made. That's what I was approving, so, um, I know that, I voted in the majority, so I, I don't know if we need to make a motion for reconsideration. So we clarify that, what exactly we're instructing city staff to do.
We will do that either way. We, we will make that happen either way administratively.
And I like the timeline that Councilman Lang just spoke of because that is right before our, uh, budget retreat. So, which will have a whole new, um, slate of things to look at.
So we good? Resolution twenty dash two one eight, alcohol code amendment.
Yes, the, uh, last item that I will be presenting this evening is resolution twenty dash two thousand eighteen, proposing amendment to chapter six of the Code of Ordinances, alcoholic beverages. And it's related to the hours of off-premises consumption of alcoholic beverages in the central business district. So this is Adamson Square. Uh, as you recall, um, the, uh, currently, uh, you're allowed to walk around the square, uh, with an alcoholic beverage and you can actually have one in each hand, uh, as long as it's in a, a plastic container, not in, not in glass. At basically all hours, there was no provision within the ordinance, uh, to basically limit the number of hours, um, that this was occurring. Um, we have spoken with the restaurants downtown and we've also, the police department has asked that we look at potentially putting some limit on that, especially after the restaurants close. Um, it will make them, it will make it easier for them to provide law enforcement downtown. And what we did was we met with the restaurants, uh, several months ago and we, uh, jointly discussed, uh, basically setting that time for two thirty A M. So the ordinance that you see in front of you, eliminates off-premises consumption on the square after two thirty A M. in the morning. Um, and this particular ordinance did not have to go to the Planning Commission, so you guys are getting a, a first look at it. This was also discussed and reviewed at your September work session along with the rest of them.
And just to make the point, this was at the request of the police department. It would make their job easier.
Correct. And we've worked with the restaurants on this, so they're well aware of this is coming, this change is coming.
They're all good with it. They're all good, the restaurants are all good with this.
We invited them all to a meeting. We had about probably four or five of the, the ones that stay open later come to the meeting and they were all certainly in favor of it. I mean, they can't sell this late anyway, so there, there's no reason for them to.
It just makes everybody go home.
Right. It, it basically clears the square out, um, and keeps people from just hanging out the rest of the night.
Erica, I knew at my store, every night I, especially on a Monday, if I go in, there's a lot of like green beer bottles on my front porch and, so those people are probably bringing those, and they throw them in the backyard and break them everywhere, but those, those individuals are bringing that from home, I'm assuming, because you can't walk around? Or would this say you can't walk around with a glass bottle? I don't like the glass bottle.
Right. I would like to think that our restaurants are pretty diligent about making folks putting it, put it in plastic as they're leaving the restaurant. Um, I know that's been the case for me personally. Um, you know, there may be an issue with folks bringing stuff in. They shouldn't. It's not allowed. It's prohibited by law, but I'm not saying that it's not occurring.
I had six, uh, glass bottles on Saturday I left in my, my front porch, green ones.
Might be some folks getting them out of their trunks and just sitting down.
Maybe so.
After hours, Jerry.
Kangaroo and all that.
Any more questions?
Make a motion, we approve resi, resolution twenty dash twenty eighteen.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion unanimously carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks.
Mr. Tim, donation of property to Carrollton City Schools.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, you gentlemen will recall, there's a piece of property that is just north of the bypass, just west of Ben Scott Boulevard and just south of Tom Reeves Drive. It was a park that was adjacent to First Georgia Bank. That is now Bank O Z K. That is actually, uh, it was donated to the city by First Georgia Bank back when they were in business. Uh, the city maintains that like a city park. It's a lot of work. It's just one, one of the things that Ken Johnston has mentioned to me that he wished he could get off his plate. Uh, Dr. Albertis expressed an interest in owning that property, the, the city school system owning that property. I think they wanna put a grand entrance at that area, a nice sign. And I think it would be beneficial to both organizations if the city would donate that to the school system. And that is what's before you.
Tim, is that, and you may be able to, Coach, you may be able to answer this, but is that fountain still? I know it had a fountain. I used to take my students out there. Oh, it's just grass now. Okay. The rocks and all the, uh. But all those little red trees, I've forgotten the name of, Japanese maples and all that, that's still there, right?
Sun located around there, yes.
Yeah, that's a beautiful little.
Try to keep those.
Yeah, that's beautiful.
We did build in that particular section with the sign, we would replant them.
I think that's a great idea and I'm all for this. Great.
I've got a question for Erica, I think. Um, from a signage standpoint, have we reviewed what's, uh, signage on, in that commercial area? What are our standards for that? Have we changed to, or is it similar to what our, um, overlay district signage requirements are? Did I phrase that in a way that made any sense there?
I'm not a hundred percent sure. They're proposing to do more of a fence, so there's, there's wouldn't be, they may put a sign on the fence, kind of like a residential, like a subdivision entrance, where you've got kind of maybe like a brick fence with the sign on the fence. Um, so they would only be required to basically permit that, that piece of, of the sign that would be on the fence. So they're just trying to do kind of almost like a subdivision entrance into the city schools.
Kind of like a monumental sign, or monument sign that we've kind of.
It's really more like fence. I mean, it's, it's gonna be much longer and, like I said, it's more like a, a fence structure.
But it doesn't sound like it's glowing and flashing or anything like that?
No, no.
Okay, great.
It's like the university's flame of knowledge, like that sign, right?
Right, or, I mean, several of our subdivisions have. I mean, Oak Mountain Golf, I think, has fencing with, with signage. And I mean, that's the best way to probably, the best analogy to use.
And we'll offer them special dispensation because they're Carrollton City Schools, right? I make a mo, motion, we, uh, approve this, uh, land, let me read that, thank you, man. The, uh, donation of property to Carrollton City Schools, uh.
Motion and a second. Any more discussion? Hearing none, I assume you're ready to vote. All in favor of donating the property to Carrollton City Schools, please raise your hand. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Bid award, City Hall Public Safety Complex Depot Fire Alarm Improvement.
If you don't mind, I'll make this one quick for Tommy, cause I know we're, we're running late. Oh, the state fire marshal came in and hit us the same way he's hit every restaurant in town. And so this building does not comply from an alarm standpoint. The evidence building out back does not and the depot does not. We went out to bid for the right alarm systems and, uh, we received two, uh, two bids and the, the lowest qualified bid is Security Solutions at ninety-six thousand eight hundred fifty-five dollars. There was a lesser bid from Blackwater Technologies, but it did not meet all the requirements. So we recommend that you award that, uh, to, to Security Solutions to upgrade the alarm systems in these three buildings and get us comply, compliance with the fire code.
So the Blackwater crowd just didn't come through with a complete package?
They didn't bid everything and, uh, Tommy would have specific details, but they did not bid everything they were supposed to bid. Security does most of our work along this lines. If you want more detail, Tommy will come to the mic and give it to you.
Any questions, gentlemen? I can make a motion, we approve.
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Bid award, Engineering Department Vehicle. Is that Tony?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, the city Carrollton Engineering Department, uh, has currently budgeted for a new bucket truck for street light maintenance and other elevated work. It solicited bids, the three bids that were received or listed is, uh, Cherokee Truck Equipment, one hundred twenty-nine thousand three hundred twenty-five dollars. Altech Incorporated, one hundred thirty-two thousand one hundred seventy-five dollars and O G Hughes and Sons at one hundred and thirty-two dollars, two hundred fif, one hundred thirty-two thousand two hundred fifteen dollars and thirty-four cents. So city staff recommends you, uh, award the purchase of the bucket truck to the low bidder Cherokee Truck Equipment. The funds for the purchase is included, as I said, in the current budget year and the current truck that's used for this work is a nineteen ninety-nine model and it's just become unreliable.
Anybody got any questions for Mr. Richardson?
I just wanna say thank you to Mike Green and Kenny Rollins for maintaining a truck for that long. Um, I've been, uh, in a bucket truck a good few times, um, in my job and that's something you definitely wanna make sure is working. Um, so I really appreciate the fact that you guys have been, were keeping it maintained for that long. Um, it's a testament to, uh, your commitment to saving taxpayer dollars. Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion, we approve. I have a second. Any more discussion? All in favor of approving this award to Cherokee Truck and Equipment, please raise your hand. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Uh, bid award, multiple department vehicles. Tony?
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. Item number ten, uh, our vehicle bids for multiple departments. Prices were solicited for budgeted vehicles in our current budget year for the codes enforcement department, systems upkeep, sanitation, wastewater and water filter plant, all of those being extended cab half ton four-wheel drive pickup trucks. The one exception being the water filter plant, which was a compact S U V. The codes enforcement are gonna be replacing a ninety-eight F one fifty. This is a. This is a older truck that has in excess of a hundred thousand miles and was used extensively by the facilities maintenance department and was overloaded for most of its life. The Systems Upkeep Department's going to replace a ninety-seven F-150 with two hundred and twelve thousand plus miles on it. The sanitation department will replace a nineteen ninety-eight F-150 with two hundred and twenty-three thousand plus miles. And the wastewater department's going to replace a nineteen ninety-eight F-150 that we know has a hundred and fifty thousand miles. The odometer quit working at one time on it. And so we attached a summary, oh, the water plant's going to replace an old '03 Ranger that has in excess of a hundred and thirty-three thousand miles. And attached to your package, you'll see a summary of all the bids that were received. The lowest bid for the extended cab half-ton trucks for those departments was Scott Evans' Dodge at twenty-five thousand one hundred seventy-three dollars. The lowest bid on the compact SUV for the water plant was a statewide contract holder, which is Allen Vigil Ford, at nineteen thousand one hundred ninety-eight dollars. Lowest local bidder, again, was Scott Evans' Dodge at nineteen thousand five hundred and fifty-seven dollars or a difference of three hundred and fifty-nine dollars. So while we were putting this together, we determined we also needed a full-size van for our facilities maintenance department. It will replace a small van that's built on a car platform and is currently overloaded for what it's used for. If approved, we'll move the small van to the IT department to replace an old nineteen ninety-eight Ford Expedition, again, the odometer does not work on, so we don't know the exact mileage, but it's way above a hundred and fifty thousand. There is sufficient capital budget in the wastewater department to fund this, should you choose to do so. The lowest bid for the work van was statewide contract holder, again, Allen Vigil Ford, twenty-two thousand one hundred and eighty-six dollars, and that was on a two thousand seventeen leftover model. The lowest local bidder was Mike Bell Chevrolet at two, twenty-two thousand five hundred and twenty-two dollars and sixty cents for a twenty-eighteen model year for a difference of only three hundred and thirty-six dollars, should you purchase locally or choose to. City staff recommends purchasing the vehicles from either the vendor returning the lowest bid or where the lowest bid, the statewide contract provider. You may, if you prefer, order the vehicles locally. We can purchase the SUV from Scott Evans Dodge and the work van, work van from Mike Bell Chevrolet.
Anybody got any questions? I'd like to make a motion, we approve. Just a low price. We got a state contractor. Whatever y'all want to do.
I make a motion. I purchased the SUV from Scott Evans Dodge and the work van from Mike Bell Chevrolet. Keep it local.
Motion and a second. Everybody, any more discussion? Everybody ready to vote? All, all voting in approval mode, please raise your hand. All opposed?
Mr. Mayor, if I could comment, I want to give you something that was said about Tony, and this applies to Mike Green and his people also and, and most of our staff, but I was at the tractor dealer in Rootville on a personal issue, and the guy that owned the place, Roger Harrod, scolded me for the condition of our tractors because Tony runs them so hard and they are so worn out by the time he gets done. And that's the kind of thing I like to hear. I consider that a great compliment. I've seen Tony take two Kubota UTVs and take them apart and make one out of them. He's got some Bush Hogs. I don't think there's anything left on them that's original, so he really stretches that and saves us money, as does Mike Green shop with those good mechanics. So I echo what Rory said here earlier.
Tony, you're still up. Got a bid award for the water treatment plant.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. This is item eleven on your agenda tonight. Wastewater Treatment Department solicited bids for rehabilitation, rehabilitation to clarify, number three. Now, this is an Amwell currently installed piece of equipment at the wastewater plant, been there since the late sixties, been in operation since the late sixties, and that's not an hour or two a day, that's twenty-four seven. So it has been, given us good service for way over forty years, and the rehabilitation project consists of removal and replacement of the moving parts, not the entire structure. And since it is an Amwell, we priced it there first, but being diligent, we wanted to go ahead and, and price it with other companies to make sure that we were, you know, getting a comparable price. So the Amwell, which is, was currently installed, it was, it's just old, was Templeton and Associates, and they were the low bidder at two hundred and twenty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. Principal Environmental returned a quote of four hundred eighty-eight thousand four hundred dollars, and Wastewater Industrial Solutions, three hundred and eighty-nine thousand five hundred dollars. The low bidder, again, is Templeton and Associates, which represents the manufacturer of the equipment that's currently in there, so it would be a removal and replacement of the current equipment that's just worn out. The project is included in our current budget, and we recommend that you award the, this project to Templeton and Associates in the amount of two hundred and twenty-five thousand seven hundred dollars.
Maybe we award the contract to Templeton Associates for two hundred twenty-seven thousand five hundred dollars.
Motion and a second. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of making this award, please raise your hand. All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, Mr. Tony. Bid award, Stallings Community Center.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Council, I think you're aware, we've previously talked about in the work sessions and, and the budget to have these Tracy Stallings Community Center roof replaced. The engineering and rate department went out for bids and we received two competitive bids from West Georgia Roofing and SHC Roofing. Staff recommends going with the lower price, West Georgia Roofing, awarding the bid, but also understand that they're actually going to have to take off four layers of roof to get down to the deck and, we hope the deck is in good shape, but it could potentially be more than, than the bid price.
I know everybody's tired and ready to go home, but I have to ask this question. It says the original roof was built in nineteen thirty-two. Is that the same roof that's been there since nineteen thirty-two?
Well, it's got four on top of it. I'm not sure.
Four layers on top.
It's four layers.
Built that roof.
That's what increased the cost. It's a little bit more than we expected, taking off the four roofs and complying with OSHA requirements and checking for the asbestos has made the cost a little higher.
Are we going back with a rubber roof or the reggar tar and gravel?
More of a rubberized roof for the sixty mil, I believe.
Any more questions?
That's my mitts old school. We went, we went around.
You reckon you were there with the second or third roof?
Might have been that nineteen thirty-two roof. It never leaked though, did it? Well, maybe it did, Mr. Chinchey's room.
I'd like to make a motion, we accept the pre-roofing bid from West Georgia Roofing. Second. Any more discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries. Thank you very much.
May I add that I'm so glad we're replacing that roof, and I'm so glad too that we're preserving that structure. I just don't want to see another beautiful building like that go down, so thank you.
Item number thirteen, elected officials compensation, this falls under you, Tim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have met the requirement for advertising an increase to the mayor and council's compensation. Tonight, you would vote whether to implement that. We've had three, three consecutive advertisements as required by law. I want to stress, this does not affect, this would not go into effect until two thousand twenty. In other words, after the next regularly scheduled election, that keeps elected officials from giving themselves a raise. It, it applies to the next, next elected body. And that's basically it. The amount would be, for the mayor, fourteen thousand four hundred dollars annually, and for a councilman would be seventy-two hundred dollars annually. Currently, it's thirty-six hundred for a councilman and six thousand for the mayor. And we did compare this to cities this size, and you gentlemen are grossly underpaid compared to other cities your size.
Any discussion? Any comments from the floor? Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion, we increase the mayor's salary to fourteen thousand four hundred annually and council members to seventy-two hundred dollars annually.
I have a motion, do I have a second? I have a second, Mr. Willey. Any more discussion? All in favor of increasing the elected officials' compensation for the years twenty twenty, or the election twenty twenty, is that right? Nineteen to twenty twenty. And I guess that will... Is that correct? For twenty twenty, please raise your hand. All opposed? Thank you, gentlemen. Item number fourteen, update E-compliant costs and feasibility study. Tim?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We were directed to, to look into a better E-complaint, in other words, electronic online complaint system. Right now, we've got an item, we've got an icon on the website that you click to, to send complaints, and they go to myself and they go to Mike Green. And we were directed to do something more elaborate and also have a better tracking. I want to recognize Sam Stinson, young man in our IT department, and he found a product that we already own and it won't cost anything to do this with. So our intent is to, to have this implemented when we redo the website. We're hoping to have something in place by the end of January. If you want more detail tonight, I'll be glad to give it to you. I can tell you that Libby surveyed the number of complaints we'd had electronically. I mean, this, we had tons of complaints, obviously, but through the website over the year and past year, and you want to post that, you might not be interested in seeing it this late, but these are just the kind of things, and I won't bore you with all the detail as late as it is, but, you know, we pride ourselves on resolving these things quickly, but this would be an enhanced system. And again, I want to compliment Sam for finding this without it actually costing outside money. It certainly took his time, but we will move forward with that, and we hope to have it in place by the end of January.
I have a question about this whole thing, and from, from this new system, what is the name of the system again now?
We haven't named it.
Well, whatever it is, who, you're the person who's in charge? Okay, I have some questions for you. So you're going to collect data from these people calling in with these situations, right? Because...
What, what it will be is it will be an automated system that allows people to submit a complaint either through an email or through an online portal, but then we will have some capabilities to see stats about who has submitted the tickets, where, what categories they've been under, whether it's road maintenance...
So you will collect cumulative data?
Uh, yes, sir, that is something.
Okay, I like that, because if it shows that, say, Mitt's ward had more police calls than my ward, then we're going to up, I'm, Joel, I'm not putting you on the spot, but we're going to up services for that particular area based on the data that comes in from this, so, right?
So with the specific example of police calls, that would not be...
And I'm just being hypothetical about police calls.
So that, that is something we can look into, doing with this system.
I, that's the only thing I like about it, because I like the Andy Griffith style of doing business, where people just call me on the phone and say, oh, there's a pothole on my street and I called Tim, and it always works. It's very effective that way. People like that. I like a face. I like to look you in your eye and say hello. I always like a computer. As long as the public knows, I'll vote in favor of this. And again, I'm looking at you, but I'm talking to the people who need to be spoken to. But as long as the public knows, they can still call me, and I'll still call Tim or Peter or Mike, or I'll still go to your house and look at that bush just growing up between your side, or whatever it is. I still want people to be under the impression that we're still old-fashioned in that way, and we will still come out and see you and service whatever it is that needs to be serviced. And look and see, they always say, come look for yourself. I still want to be able to come look for myself. But at the same time, I want data that benefits our citizens and their services based on their needs, which this program should feed. If the program doesn't, doesn't produce data, meaningful data that we can actually use and utilize to better serve our people, then I won't vote in favor of it. But you're telling me today that you can use this program to collect data on our wards and on our citizens to better serve them.
So we have not, I mean, at this moment, developed those functions of the software, but that is something that we can look into. We were just directed for cost and feasibility study.
Well, we might need to table it, because the only way I'm going to go forward is if you can do that, because this will be something...
You don't even have to vote on it.
We're not even voting on this.
I'm just giving you the update.
That's all.
Well, I like it if you do that. How about that? If you don't do that, I won't like it.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Sir.
All right.
Good answer, Sam.
Thank you.
Tim, number fifteen.
All right, we'll, we'll try to make this quick, because it's late, but we've got, what I wanted you to know...
We've been here later than this before.
Okay, that's fine.
You're doing good.
On the employee pay study, you, we just wanted you to know where we'd been and where we were going, and Faith's got a real brief presentation for you, and I may chime in to try to speed it up, so.
Yes, good evening. I'll make this very brief. The, for a summary timeline of our salary study, in March and April of two thousand and seventeen, we requested quotes for our salary study from the following. Evergreen Solutions, Mercer, Robinson Consulting Services, Arthur J. Gallagher and Company, UGA Carl Vinson Institute, Corn Ferry Hay Group, and the Archer Company. And only three out of these seven were interested, which were the UGA Carl Vinson, Corn Ferry Hay Group, and the Archer Company. In August of two thousand and seventeen, we received the following proposals. The Carl Vinson could start the study in March of two thousand and eighteen with an estimated completion date of July two thousand and eighteen and a cost of ten to fifteen thousand. The Corn Ferry Hay Group could begin February two thousand and eighteen with an estimated cost of thirty-five thousand. Then the Archer Company could start January two thousand and eighteen at a cost of eight thousand six hundred and forty dollars. The Archer Company has done work for the city before, as they were the original creators of the city's pay structure in the late nineteen nineties, and they also established the annual evaluation form. So we issued a PO in November two thousand and seventeen to the Archer Company. The Archer Company assigned Mr. Chip King, Regional Director for the Atlanta office, to do the work. We received the preliminary report in May thirtieth, oh, May thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen, and we received the final phase one report on July the fifth. On July twenty-third, Mr. King proposed evaluating some job positions and the pay grades as phase two of this project. In August two thousand and eighteen, I sent data to Chip King for job position evaluations. Mr. King was to present phase one report at our city work session on Sep, September the seventeenth. Unfortunately, he passed away unexpectedly the week before. So we spoke with the Archer Company about finishing phase two. We also called and spoke with Carl Vinson about completing our phase two, and Carl Vinson told us they would not act on or continue the data or the report we were given by the Archer Company, which was standard in this industry. We also spoke with some local people about finishing our study, and none felt like they were qualified. We are in the process of comparing our current total benefit package to all twelve organizations surveyed in our salary study. Just last week, the Archer Company has confirmed they will complete phase two. They've assigned us two people. It's another regional director out of Ohio and a lady that is local in Atlanta to, to finish our phase two of our project. We hope to see this work completed by January and our work session in January. We can also have the representatives from the Archer Company that's completing phase two come and present the study at either the work session and/or a meeting. Do you have any questions?
So this is the salary study, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And this was just a timeline of the progression.
Yes, ma'am. And maybe somebody on council could remind me why we're doing a salary study.
I know we've...
I know we've talked multiple times about making sure that we are staying not only competitive, but also looking to retain and recruit quality staff. And I think from an HR standpoint and from a budgeting standpoint, it's important to look at positions, their grades, and how we're comparing to other cities, to other businesses that might either steal our employees or look to recruit our employees, is a better way of saying it. What we also want to do is make sure that our benefit packages and retirement and other things like that are part of that study, because salary alone is not what employees look to or look at when looking for a job.
So, the median price range for this thing is about twenty, I mean, I'm not a mathematician at all. Trust me, I'm not. But it's about twenty thousand dollars, is it? Somewhere in there?
That would be the average, but the Archer Company, having done work for the City of Carrollton, is eight thousand six hundred and forty for Phase One. Now, we don't have an estimated cost of Phase Two. I don't foresee it going over being more than Phase One, because it's not as in-depth.
And is there not software that we can purchase through your office and make this happen without having that expense to bear?
Not really, because in order to, you know, correctly, and Tim can jump in, but to analyze our data compared to surrounding cities as well as organizations, like the three major companies that we lose people to here in Carrollton refuse to even participate in the survey. Therefore, they had to go, these companies that have actuaries and the data analyst are able to go to a search engine that would provide that information that you couldn't get just locally.
Somebody had, a human had to pick data, and a human had to get information and compare, and so they got salaries from other cities. They got... We tried to get the information from Southwire, the university in Tanner, because so that the three big entities in town where we would generally lose people. And also, certainly, public safety, we would lose those individuals to neighboring counties and cities, and they compare to that. So, it's just not something that could be done online. It had to be done by a human.
Okay. And so, tonight, we're picking a company to do it for us?
No, you don't have to vote. We just want to give you an update.
Oh, okay.
It's just an update, yeah.
Kind of a timeline when it might be. So, maybe January?
Yes, sir.
Frankly, I want you to know why it had taken so long. I know it's been aggravating to some of y'all that this drug out, but I wanted you to hear how much effort was put into it, how many companies we tried to get to do this for us, and it was just time that you heard that story.
You know what, again, I need to stop watching Andy Griffith, but I really don't watch it the way I used to when I was a kid. But you know what I would like? Just ask the employees, like, what can we do to, have we done that? Remember we have?
I actually do an exit interview for anyone that...
No, I mean with the ones we have now, like, how can we keep you? What can we do to keep you? How can we make the City of Carrollton better? How can we make this a better establishment? Have we tried? I mean, I don't mean to insult anybody.
I mean, we get a lot of feedback from employees. We get a lot of feedback from the department heads who are trying to retain people. So, I really think we do that. I mean, Joel's sitting back there, and he can tell you, you know, he's talked to us about what he's doing to recruit and what benefits are important, and so I really think we do that. And, but I appreciate what you're saying, and we can step that up.
Yeah, let's step that up. I'd rather do that the old-fashioned way, just maybe taking a few notes like better, blah, 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 or whatever. Free meals from the square twice a month or something like that, you know, just food truck. And I know I'm not trying to be comical at all, but I just wish we'd go back to an old-fashioned approach of asking people how they feel.
And that's our goal, to maintain and retain employees, because the cost to train, especially in our public safety departments, is huge. And if we can maintain and retain those employees instead of training them the first three, four years and have them leave, it will be a huge benefit to the city. So, that's our goal by this.
And I'm for doing anything on this end to support their salaries and increase that, since I didn't, I voted against increasing my own salary. And I'm sure it may have passed, but I wish we could take that savings and pass it down to the employees who are here every day. I never come to City Hall. Come every once in a while, but it's not my place of work.
One thing I would like to request is in moving forward, it'd become just a regular thing. I'm assuming it probably will. I know salaries, benefits, everything, that's all a moving target. We're gathering data from a year ago, and we're going to implement things based on that. In three years, it'll be completely different. So, just from a maintenance thing, just having that as a reoccurring thing will be, I guess, probably will be presented from a year-to-year basis when we're looking at budget, just to make sure we are maintaining that, retaining those good employees and things of that nature.
Right. And we did learn through this process that it's normal that we realign and readjust our pay grades, which is our current pay system, every two to three years with your competition, your surrounding cities, counties, and organizations. So, we plan on doing that. More questions?
Is anything anybody else wants to bring before this body?
I want to introduce Jessica Everingham, the new director at the library, and she's doing a great job. We're all working closely together, so.
So, you on Wednesday, right? Can I have a motion we adjourn? Motion and second.